Please stand and join us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. Dear my Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings you've given us. Give us guidance today as we go through the business of the people of Montgomery. These things we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government which stands one nation under God in the business of with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for your participation in the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, need approval of the uh, September second twenty twenty five work session meeting minutes?
Move to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need approval for the September second twenty twenty five regular council meeting?
Move to adopt.
All in favor please raise your hand.
Eight with eight abstaining.
Alright. Need a motion for the approval of the September ninth twenty twenty five budget work session meeting?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, all in favor please raise your hand.
Gonna be eight with six abstaining.
Okay, uh, Mayor's mission, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To city council to all those uh, residents, uh, city employees, those that are here in person, those that are participating virtually, uh, it's good to see everybody. Uh, we'll be very brief tonight, I know we've got uh, some discussion to have. Uh, but did want to come before everyone and talk about a lot of the good things that are happening in the city because of so much of the work that's being done by our residents and our citizens uh, all across uh, this community. A lot of positive things are happening, a lot of great things uh, are taking place here. Uh, and we owe it to everyone that's here and everyone uh, that's a part of this uh, to assist us. Uh, or to that is assisting us in this, just to say thank you. Um, I do want to uh, start by recognizing we had a passing of a long time pastor, uh, today, um, Reverend Jordan, uh, from uh, Lily Baptist Church, um, pasted there for fifty-six years. Um, and someone who was baptized, uh, ordained by Dr. King, uh, and Reverend Ralph Abernathy truly a direct connection to those that led this city at a time, uh, led this nation at a time, uh, when their words and their actions were so needed. And so, uh, to the Jordan family, we just want to uh, thank them for their service and let them know that we'll be lifting them up, uh, prayer during this time of grief. Uh, also want to just kind of highlight, um, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, uh, which we proposed, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, this is the largest proposed budget in Montgomery's history, uh, reflecting the city's growth and potential. Uh, this budget prioritizes public safety, infrastructure, workforce development, and ensuring real benefits for our neighborhoods and residents. Want to thank our council, again, our city employees, uh, citizens for their partnership, and I'm confident we can adopt a budget that reflects our shared vision for a stronger Montgomery. Certainly want to encourage our residents, uh, to continue to participate throughout the year and provide feedback, uh, as they see things that are going on and see ways that we can make government more effective and efficient, uh, throughout the year. Now I want to talk about the seed academy, uh, which stands for Supporting and Power Emerging Developers. In a, this is a week-long hands-on program to equip startup and emerging real estate developers with the knowledge, tools, and technical support to deliver projects right here in the city of Montgomery. You can scan the QR code to learn more and apply. Applications close this Friday, uh, the nineteenth, September nineteenth, and that's just three days from now. So be sure you don't miss out on this incredible opportunity and get your applications in today. Our Parks and Recreation After School Program is off to an incredible start this year. Recently, the children at Chisholm learned all about the vital role bees play in our environment from local beekeeper and owner of Zizi's Bee Company, Sam Huth. They even got to taste fresh honey straight from the hive. Meanwhile, over at Sheridan Heights, Quincy Leonard of Leo Golf Academy introduced students to the fundamentals of golf, teaching the basics and inspiring our kids to give the sport a try. This is exactly what our after-school program is about. Giving our young people enriching hands-on experiences that spark curiosity and connect them to their community. There's still space available for students in grades four through eight at the Sheridan Heights Community Center. Sign up today by scanning the QR code or calling three three four six two five two three zero zero. Now coming up, um, on October third and fourth is HBCU Classic Weekend. Uh, we'll be partnering along with Alabama State University for their homecoming events with the Morehouse Esq. Classic, the nation's oldest, uh, HBCU football classic in the country, Saturday, October the fourth at six PM. But you'll have events leading up to that, uh, that you can get right here from the QR code, uh, for HBCU Weekend as well as Morehouse Esq. Classic. I would look forward to a weekend full of events and football as well as a debut of the fun and even controversial Ferris wheel downtown at the Riverwalk. Never knew a Ferris wheel could be controversial, but here we are. Um, want to scan the QR code to stay in the know and grab your tickets. Uh, so we look forward to seeing each and everybody, uh, out this weekend celebrating uh, fall football right here, uh, in downtown Montgomery. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month. Gynecologic cancers are among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States. With more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand women diagnosed and over thirty-three thousand lives lost each year, these diseases leave a lasting absence in the hearts of loved ones and in our communities. The Laura Crandall Brown Foundation has worked tirelessly to bring awareness of all uh, GYN cancers to the people of Montgomery and across the state of Alabama. I'd like to invite the members of the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation to accept this proclamation. If you'll come up front right before the city council, which declares September as Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Montgomery. We have all the members of the foundation to come right up front here right before the council, I'll present the proclamation and we'll take a picture for our records.
Thank you, congratulations.
Mr. President, that concludes, uh, my message for today, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, any questions other mayor? Alright, Madam Clerk? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, any special committee report?
Yes, Mr. President, um, I would like to report, um, what we are in discussions with the Commerce and Industry Committee met on yesterday, we had a packed house, um, and we had some really good discussion in introducing the STR, which is the Short Term Rental Ordinance, and we had conversations and learned about pad splitting, learning that that was a brand and the renaming of that ordinance to Single Residential Occupancy Ordinance, uh, that'll be up for conversation, and we are now working with the different city departments, and we will meet again on October eighth at ten AM, that is open to the public, and we'll have more information to present and add or take away from this ordinance, and that is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitch.
Uh, we have had our committee on youth sports in the city of Montgomery. Um, it was very interesting, we did have the YMCA that was represented, we had the Boys and Girls Club that was represented, we had the city lead, uh, the biggest thing that they asked of the city is that we, um, ensure that they have those off-duty police officers, we did have Chief Graybores, we did have the Sheriff Cunningham there, so we want to make sure, we did have MPD, MPD there and MPS Chief Forte. Um, so they will implement the same safety protocol, protocols that, um, MPS have for their, their football game, so hopefully we won't see any more incidents, but we will meet again with them probably within the next month.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mitch. Any other council member? Alright, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, item one through six is your consent agenda for the council's consideration.
Alright, need a motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Contracts are approved. Item seven, ordinance rezoning thirty-two twenty-one Dove Street from an R sixty D district to an R ninety-nine S district.
Alright, representative for item number seven, please come forward. Item number seven. Alright, Ms. uh, Ralph?
Um, Mr. President, I spoke with the community and, um, we had a neighborhood association meeting and we brought them in and talked to them, they, the community is not upon this, and I approve for deny.
Alright, we have a motion to deny, all in favor please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is denied. Item eight, ordinance rezoning thirty-five twenty-one Hanwell Road from an R sixty D district to a B two district.
Need representative for item number eight, Hanwell Road? Yes, sir, your name for the record?
Hurdis Vaughn, Jr.
Alright, Mr. Vaughn, you want to tell us what you're planning to do on item number eight, what you, what you, what you asking?
Well, my original plan was to, uh, open up a flea market, uh, outdoor flea market, but the backside of my property is not commercial, the front part is commercial, but the back is not. So what I decided to do-
Speaking to that mic for me, please.
What I decided to do was just still do my flea market, but, uh, I was going to still do my flea market, but on the front part, and just use the back for parking.
Okay, alright, Ms. Ralph?
I met with the community, community came out, he had an opportunity to speak with the community, as well, Mr. President, the community is not for this, and, uh, my motion is for deny.
Alright.
But the community at the meeting-
My motion is for deny.
I understand, but could I speak? At the meeting, you said and everybody there said that you didn't have a problem with the flea market, but you had a problem with changing my property over to commercial. I'm not trying to ch- change that part of my property.
This is, excuse me, Mr. President, this is what this ordinance for is to commercial rezoning the district which is thirty-five twenty-one Hanwell Road, and that's the property, and the community is against it, so it's for deny, for that property to be converted over.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you have petition for is for a rezoning of the property.
Okay, rezoning, so I can't, so I can't do nothing, I done bought a building that I can't do nothing with. So y'all telling me I can't open a building, when I bought it, it had commercial, it was commercial. The guy had the front part as commercial. Now you telling me that I can't open up a commercial play, I don't understand.
It's only for this part of the one point five acres located on the southeast side of Hanwell Road that is, that you want to rezone it from a duplex residential zoning district to a B two commercial zoning, which is a AKA three-five twenty-one Hanwell Road. So the comm- the neighborhood association is not agreeing, it butts in the back of those people houses, so it's a, it's district for city council recommends a deny for it.
But see, I'm not having the flea market in the back, it's in the front, it's already commercial, so what's, what's the problem with that?
Let me, let me-
I'm not getting any money out of it, if you come over there, the whole place back there is a bunch of empty lots, and there's a building across the street that's abandoned. I ring just one of, it's, it ain't number land back there, it's a few houses, about three or four. The lady that, it was at, one of the ladies that was at the meeting, her and the man, they come out and-
Sir, 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 let, let, we have a question on the floor, we have a motion to deny, I think what she, that the deny is for the rezoning of the property.
Okay, if I'm not rezoning it, I'm, I'm leaving it, but what if that's-
That's what, that's what we're voting on right now, is for the rezoning of the property. Now, if you're going to continue to run your flea market, that will be between our license division to do what they need to do there, this is just for the rezoning of the property.
We're already, we're gonna apply for that, so.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion on the floor to deny, all in favor please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is denied. Item nine, ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and debt service budget and adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating and debt service budget.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. President, I'd, I'd like to make a, a motion to split these two questions.
Okay, so you want to ask for the ordinance amending the FY twenty twenty, for operation and debt service budget to be one question, and adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating and debt service budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have a motion?
It doesn't have to be voted on, any member can call for division of the-
Alright, so we're calling, uh, the question is the ordinance amending the F twenty twenty-five operation budget, that's the question, so all in favor for amending?
You need a, you need a motion to-
You want to need a motion?
On what they want to do with ordinance twenty, with the amending twenty twenty-five.
Yep, Mr. 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 Grimes, what's, 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 what's your pleasure?
Amending twenty-five?
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm carrying it though, I don't, I'm not voting on that one.
Okay, Ms. Beville?
I know.
We want to carry it over, there has to be a reason for that.
I mean, what, what, the thing is on twenty-five, what I'm understanding, what are you amending in twenty twenty-five, what line item are you amending?
We, we don't know what the, we don't know what the fallout or anything would be at this point.
But what are you amending?
I'm not amending anything.
The budget is over with in two weeks, is what I'm saying.
Well, I, I know, I know, but we won't, the dust won't settle for another six weeks, eight weeks.
I'm trying to get to the question, what are you asking?
I'm asking, we can see we're all, if any, if there is any, or all the fallout, I need to know where it goes.
Ms. Beville?
And there's a list of all those projects that I can give into, um, the council president is regarding the, uh-
I, I, I shared that with the council.
That was from last, that was twenty-four's, right?
No, that's for the, the fallout in twenty twenty-five, but-
But it's twenty twenty-four's expenditures.
When?
Okay, we, we have a motion, he's asking for the split on the question.
The motion before the council is to carry over the amendment of the, uh, fiscal twenty twenty-five budget.
But my question is, what are we amending, what are we carrying over? That's, that's what I'm trying to get-
Well, Mr. President, Mr. President-
Hold on, let me get my question answered from district one, what are you asking me to amend?
Amending the twenty-
Are you asking the council?
No, sir, he's not asking you to amend anything, he's asking to carry over the amendments to fiscal twenty twenty-five, that's what I'm understanding for what's-
So what are the amendments is what I'm asking, what are the amendments?
We don't know yet.
What? So what do I have to carry, what I'm gonna carry over?
If we don't know?
No, Mr. President.
Hold on, let me, while I'm coming to you, sir, what are you asking me? What are you asking this council to do?
We don't know what all the numbers are, what we'll settle out until the, till we settle it out, and that'll be another four to five, six weeks, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
So you want the council to vote on something that you don't have any clue?
No. But, Mr. President, neither do, neither do we now, amending the budget at the, I mean, it was brought up the last time, that it was gonna take until, you said we're running, you know, the numbers backwards and, you know, we're paying off thirteenth week payroll or thirteenth month payroll, all that type of stuff.
The thirteenth accounting period is what it's called.
Accounting period or whatever, yeah.
Yes, because we have the, um-
So, so we've amended the budget, we, we give this authorization to make sure that any changes that need to be made based on the end of twenty twenty-five, and we've proactively done that in the past, and I think the question Mr. Grimes is saying is that we'd like to know what the amendment number is before we make that amendment.
Let me ask this question, why, if we, if we, if we had budget here, why are we just getting all this, and, I mean, I got a text that said, don't let the mayor get all the discretionary funds, maybe that's, and, and it's ironic that the text said exactly what's being proposed here tonight. So, the, the question is, if, if somebody's feeding y'all the, the, the questions or the information, maybe they ought to feed y'all this during the budget season.
Well, Mrs. Mayor, I talked to-
Hold on one question, hold on one second.
I'll come back to you, sir.
May- maybe, maybe they ought to feed y'all this when y'all are asked to come to budget meetings during the summer, when the same person who's bringing up this amendment skipped all of them. So the question I have is, why are we disrupting and sabotaging the budget and what we can be doing for the city of Montgomery, we know we have major issues to address based on what some outside crowd is funneling information to some of you on the council to ask and to say. Why don't we just be very clear about that? Because we had budget hearings, we talked about it for six months, and none of this was asked until the last forty-eight to seventy-two hours.
It was brought up, first off, I'd like to go back to Mr. uh, Mr. President, you and I had a conversation about this over a month ago, Mr. Mayor, we've spoken about this as well, and we talked about this issue of the fallout. Now, all I think it's important for us to do is to understand ahead of time, we, I mean, we haven't even seen the part two, we, I mean, and I understand it doesn't come out until November, the part two part of the budget. There is a balancing that happens at the end of the year, and I think the question that we are asking is, is that can we understand what it will take to balance out the budget that gets done, it gets moved every year, it gets done every year. And, and the, and the idea that we are asking to see that at the end of the thirteenth accounting period, in my mind, does not seem like an overreach of any kind, it's just a way for us to understand exactly where we landed at the end of this fiscal year.
So, let me, let me interject something here if I may right now, okay? Okay, first of all, the FY twenty twenty-five budget was adopted last year, okay, for three hundred and thirty-one point six million dollars, due to attrition, which is basically coming from not filling positions, because you know, on October one, if you've got positions that unfill, it's not likely you're gonna have people in those positions on October one, excuse me, to actually expense all of those funds again. So for that reason, we have had in the last two years, what we call fallout, that normally would go into fund balance, I mean, we could have a fund balance now of a hundred million dollars, but think about all of the emergency situations we have had. This is what has allowed us to be able to pay for those emergency situations, we've had bridge repairs, we've had a land sale that had to be built, we have had, uh, biscuit, uh, stadium upgrades, this comes in at millions of dollars. And so, at the end of the year, if we've got enough, uh, funds available and still put in fund balance the amount that was promised by previous administration of at least a million dollars a year until we could get up to twenty percent of the total, uh, operating budget into our reserve, okay? And that's what we have been trying to do every year, because it makes our bond rating better, number one, and also it has allowed us to pay for rolling stock. We have not had to go to any bank to ask for a lease purchase agreement with the exception of one time when we had twelve million dollars that was needed to pay for these most recent, uh, purchases of sanitation trucks, uh, dump trucks and some other items. And initially, that was supposed to be an operating, uh, agreement, the way it was presented to the council by the person that was over that, uh, Public Works Department, and it was not. You all passed the ordinance, we had to come back, it had to be rescinded and another one created, because we were asking, if you all remember, for four million dollars, well, that wasn't gonna get it, it wasn't an operating lease, and I put the brakes on, got everybody together and said, hey, we need twelve million dollars, not four million dollars, okay? And so, here we are, if we did not use fallout, in the current year, uh, departments have been approved for about thirteen- uh, departments have been approved for about thirteen million dollars in equipment, okay? And the plan is to be able to use whatever fallout we have to be able to give them that equipment. That's how we've been paying for it and not having to go to the bank and get a three-year lease agreement. Every year, we drop one year off the old agreement and we put on a new agreement. It, it just moves forward and we never pay for the equipment, and we got out of that in twenty twenty-one. So this is where those funds are going. I mean, there's no way, even with the alternatives, that I can hide anything in, in terms, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying you all are accusing me of that, but I just want to be clear to make sure you all understand where the dollars are going at the end of the year from what we call fallout. And that just means that we may have had more revenue growth than we anticipated in the budget. And it also means that we had under spend by the departments because of their being frugal with their budgets to allow us to do that.
One question, now we're gonna go ahead and take the vote on the question, but I passed out before you guys the capital project needs for twenty twenty-five. That question was asked, and we know what we're faced with when we talk about city lodge, Jackson Hospital, Airport Authority, Alpha Insurance, or something that we did that came up, uh, to keep them here in Montgomery. Uh, wayfinding projects, low admissions of the equipment vehicle, that's just in front of you with totals a hundred and forty million dollars. But we have projects that before this council, and that we're talking about amending, holding up, or whatever we want to do from a council standpoint to try to do some pet projects within this city that some council members are privileged of doing. I just think that's the wrong thing to do, to hold up a budget that we have worked on for six to seven months as a council. Year in and year out to say we want, twenty twenty-five budget was already passed. That's why my question is, what are you asking to amend? Amand mean to change. What are we changing in twenty twenty-five budget? Change.
Okay, Mister President, I'd like to ask that then. What are we traditionally asking to amend? What gets amended at the end of the year?
She's not asking me to amend the budget.
That, that's what this ordinance does. It says to amend the twenty twenty-five budget, which is always done.
That gives, excuse me, that gives you the opportunity to make a change if we had to have one.
Correct.
What if we came in, uh, over budget? We, that would have to be a change because we can't, we can't do that.
But I think that's exactly, but if we were coming in over budget, then we would also want to have that conversation about why we're coming in over budget. I mean, I looked at the last year, I looked at fiscal year twenty-four. FY, I, I did not vote for the budget last year because I had some concerns based on the previous years about the amount that we were coming in under budget and how that was being allocated. And so I'm not worried about pet projects, and I'm, I don't need anybody else to think for me. What I'm just asking is, is part of this, is getting a good understanding of what it means when we say amend the budget. When you looked at where we were last year, I would ask, what did it take to, what do we do to amend the twenty twenty-four budget?
There was no need to amend the budget. We didn't overspend the budget.
So we didn't, we didn't do anything at the end of the last year to amend the budget?
N- no, sir. That just gives you the opportunity to do it if you should need to.
Okay.
And that's what it's saying about the twenty twenty-five budget. Is there a, a need to amend it because, hey, we're not gonna have enough revenue to pay for all the expenditures that we've incurred during the year?
Yeah.
And we've gotta find another revenue source to take care of that? Because by law, we cannot bust that budget.
Now, Miss Beville, we were just trying to find out where all the money goes. We weren't, no way was anybody think you were taking money.
Well, also.
Make that real clear.
We could have asked that question all during the year.
Yeah, yeah.
And prior to the budget meetings, but no one did.
Okay, we act, I actually brought this about six weeks ago. I brought this up in, in, in the meeting, I think Mister, Mister Smansky said that. I did bring this up about six weeks ago.
Okay, so the question is, we're voting on amending the twenty twenty-five operating budget. That's, that's what I'm, okay?
That's the motion before.
So we split the question, that's the question on the floor. That's the question.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Alright, so all in favor of amending the twenty twenty-five operation budget?
Carrying over, you're carrying over the amendment to twenty twenty-five. Which I'm assuming.
What are you carrying over, something that passed last year? Okay, 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 well, you go ahead and take the vote. All in favor of carrying over the twenty twenty-five operating budget? Do so by showing your hand.
Four.
Alright, all opposed have the same right.
Five.
Alright, that motion.
Motion carries, so the main motion is back before the council.
So we're voting on the operation of the twenty twenty-six budget.
Need a motion.
Need a motion.
To adopt.
Alright, have a motion to adopt, all in favor?
Who made it? I didn't.
Mister Genright.
Alright.
I demand.
Have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-six, twenty-six operating budget. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Uh, this is, no, you're back to ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty-five and adopting the twenty twenty-six operating.
Okay, you just read it, okay.
Cause the, the, the division of the question.
Alright, so let me, let me get this. How are we gonna take the amendments? One by one, you have them, and we gonna vote them up, or we just take them in a block?
I think you take them individual, just, let's go one.
I have one that y'all don't have before you that Mister Pruitt wants him to read.
You have one that we don't have before us?
No, sir, and they can make an amendment from the floor. There's nothing that says to come previous.
Okay.
On page.
Let me take, let me take the ones we have first. Can we take the ones that you have that was presented to the council, project?
Presented clerk.
Yeah.
Let me ask Mister, Mister President.
Mister, Mister Genright?
This doesn't balance.
No, sir, it does not balance.
Do we know what it takes to balance it?
No, I do not. That's gonna be a finance question.
Eddie, have you seen this, these adjustments to the budget?
Because Mister Zabanski and Mrs. Johnson are both taken from the same account, and it's overdrawn.
Yeah, did that, did that get balanced in this issue?
It has to be balanced.
That's what finance did, and it does not balance the budget. That's what I was told by.
The council has to balance that and give it back to the mayor balanced.
So it, it's not balanced?
It's not balanced.
No, sir, it's not balanced.
What's it take to balance it? I can't see the number.
You can't use the same funding source to pull from. That's what's going on, it's not balanced.
Well, then we just need, I'll take my vote back on amendments. We can't, I, we're not gonna, we don't know what we amended.
Okay, are you gonna make?
Okay.
Two mistakes. I can tell you what I wanna do.
Miss Johnson presented this, and she's willing to withdraw this.
Are you making a motion to reconsider, Mister Genright?
No.
Are you making a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Where it's not balanced is, where is it not, um, I see where it's coming.
The big one here.
I, I presented mine. I think we all presented it balanced, and we need to see which ones that we wanna.
Well, you got, you're gonna take a while to do that because the bottom, I'm a double dip.
My, yeah.
Three hours on the same deal is, is gonna.
The, the one that was, is seven nine four zero four, line item seven nine four zero four, page forty-five.
Hold it, yeah, look at the big page. Let, let, let me, lines.
And Miss Johnson, you're taking a hundred thousand out of it, which zeros it out, and Mister Zabanski wants to take fifty thousand from the same account, which overdraws it.
Right, and that's seven nine, the account number is seven nine four zero four.
Uh-huh.
Counsel Johnson, you want to split that one fifty fifty?
And, and this, so, I, I could make this suggestion to you now, or, uh, I would think that you might wanna recuse from that one.
Okay. Recuse on the convention one?
Mine, I know mine doesn't affect anybody else.
No, it doesn't.
Three, I got.
Right.
Situation.
McColl.
Mister Genright, what's your?
Let me get, let me give mine first, and we'll put those up, most of those, then we go next bit.
Alright.
A decrease.
It's on page forty-five.
Item number seven eight seven one four, which is Montgomery County Health Department, which is a misnamed. Brings it down to a balance of eighty-three thousand two fifty, reduce it by fifty thousand. Fifty thousand goes to the Montgomery Historical, twenty-five thousand goes to Montgomery Historical Society, and then twenty-five thousand goes to Cancer Wellness Foundation. That balances, mine balanced.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I, I motion to approve those.
Mister Genright?
Yes, ma'am.
Make the correction of where you're sending that to, please. We've got Montgomery Health Department.
That, that is a, uh, Health Services Incorporated, that's coming, coming out of that, that budget, that's not, that's a different, different name than it was, according, Miss Beville.
It is. We have to change it in the system.
So it comes out, fifty thousand comes out of that account, and that money goes back to the Historical Society and the Cancer Wellness Foundation.
Alright. Make a motion.
I move to adopt those.
Amen.
Alright, have a motion on the floor to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Which line item, if I could make sure that it had a big one of them.
Yeah, nobody can prove that.
Which line, uh, which number were you all trying to take?
I'm not, I've got one seat there that you've got in front of you.
Okay, yours didn't affect anything that I put on.
No, it didn't affect anything. You're, alright, you, you approve that one?
Yeah.
You got the vote?
Okay, hands back up.
Hey, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Oh, okay, I think it's.
Unanimous.
Alright.
Alright, so.
And the next one to create a balance is, um, so I'll keep mine and.
Yeah, um, Madam Clerk, what I'll do is the page forty-five, line number seven nine four oh four. I'll withdraw those, but I'll keep the page forty-six, seven seven six six eight in.
Which will be a hundred thousand, reduce by one hundred thousand with ending balance of two hundred thousand. Apply fifty thousand to new item River Region Trails and apply fifty thousand to, uh, uh, Montgomery Area Council on Aging, which is a line item.
The page forty-six.
Yes, just that, the, the second part of it, he's withdrawing the first part and doing only the amendment of, on page forty-six.
Coming out of what?
That doesn't affect anything.
Seven nine four zero four?
No, he went to, he is now coming out of seven seven six six eight. And that is on page forty-six. That should balance the budget.
Alright, you, you got it in the split line?
I've got it the way he presented it.
Okay, so you got the change?
Page forty-six, item number seven seven six six eight, reduce by one hundred thousand. And we apply fifty thousand to a new line item River Region Trails and fifty thousand to McColl, which is, uh, Montgomery Area Council on Aging.
Isn't McColl already in the budget?
Yes, there isn't. There, I, we struck through that it was a new one. He did not realize Mill on Wheels was the same thing as McColl.
Now, did McColl come toward the council and ask for an increase?
They're already, I don't.
I know they're in the budget. Did, did come to a budget year and ask for an increase during our budget year?
We didn't have any profits come before the council.
They did only send a letter.
They sent, I sent, I sent out a memo asking that those entities send us letters, uh, for, for their asking.
Did you receive one from McColl?
Uh, you know, I've slipped since then. I can check with Angie. Do you remember? We did, we did, we did.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
And for what amount?
Angie, do you remember? She's got a, a spreadsheet here with that information on it.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor for those changes. Alright, all in favor of the motion, do so by showing your hand.
Okay, hands up, people. Hands up. Four.
Alright, all opposed have the same right?
Okay, I'm missing Mrs. Johnson's vote. I have three. Miss Johnson, I don't have your vote.
I'm, I'm still trying to get the numbers, because I, I, I have one for McColl, I will age on the aging one. So I just wanna make sure that the numbers are still intact.
Are you abstaining?
Yes.
So motion fails for a lack of.
It fails for a lack of majority, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next one? Miss Johnson?
No, did you all need me to go through it?
My question is going to be if they understand a balance from all of this because I'm not a finance person. This because I'm not a.
Yes.
It's balanced.
It was not balanced, but she's, she's saying it's, she is because of the changes that she's made.
Yeah.
Okay, I need those in writing, what changes you're making, making.
Okay, well, I, I'm not adjusting mine.
I beg your pardon?
I, I'm not adjusting mine.
Mister Smansky withdrew. The one hundred thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that balances back out that line item to add back the dollars into the seven seven six six eight, which would give the funding back into the same, and I put something for McColl as well, so it will balance it back out. The one I sent was balanced on from mine without there, but Mister Genright didn't take from any account that I pulled from, except for the seven eight seven one four. Seven eight seven one four. And I pulled from seven eight seven one four a hundred thousand. So they did, they definitely did a hundred thousand.
Say it again.
So for the seven eight seven one four, I pulled a hundred thousand to go to seven three nine nine one. That's an increase to four hundred thousand. I'll just change it to match what he did since he already, then we approved his. It's eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. You ready? So seven eight seven one four will have a new balance of eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
So you moving fifty thousand?
I'm moving eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to that same, then I'm moving it from that, so that'll zero that out. And I'm putting it in seven three nine nine one. So instead of a hundred thousand, it'll be the eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Will you please write those down for me?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm, I'm marking it. So now the balance of that line item.
And everything else stays the same?
Everything else stays the same.
Yes, ma'am, if you will write those for me.
Yes, ma'am.
I would appreciate it. Okay.
So that eradicates the sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar deficit that we had.
Say it again, ma'am.
That eradicates the sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Yes, ma'am.
That we were not balanced by.
Okay.
And that will balance the budget. Any question?
Okay, that's, that's three's motion on the floor.
Alright, have a motion on the floor? You, you got what, what she said, Miss Beville?
Oh, I got the numbers. You're my chief.
Okay, so you, you have, you can read them off. We gonna take them one at a time?
I don't have them.
Oh, I do. You want me to do one of them?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, alright, so what I did was on line item seven nine four zero four, I zeroed that out.
Would you give the page number as well?
Uh, page forty-five.
And what did you do with that account?
It'll be a new line item, River Region United Way.
Seven nine four oh four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hold it right there.
That's, that's the one right there.
We gotta hold that.
No, they, uh, I asked that question during the hearing.
And you did, and we told you we were researching, and we did.
Okay.
Uh, they have not been expenditures for the last two budget years because we have not had to, uh, offset any deficit by the, um, hotel. There's an agreement between RSA and the City of Montgomery where if there is a deficit, we share it fifty fifty. Well, they've been, they've had profit in the last two years. During COVID, uh, we spent, like I know, two different occasions, about four hundred and fifty thousand up to five hundred thousand dollars. And so that one hundred thousand dollars has been accumulating there, so when we do have to, uh, pay our, those funds, we've got it there. Because we don't need to be looking at, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in a given year.
Miss Beville?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, I'm just asking a question here. I'm doing some research. I saw where there, we've had it one year that we did a five hundred thousand and a eight hundred thousand. So did, was that used to, to make that with the Renaissance? I, I don't understand.
That's a, an agreement that the city has, is ironclad. We've looked at it a number of times with the legal department here. And between the city and RSA, we share, uh, supposedly we share the profits and the losses fifty percent, am I correct, Stacy? On that, and in the years that we did have to send money.
Right.
That was fifty percent of the total loss that they had. And I know one year, and it may have been twenty, I wanna say eighteen, uh, they did capital improvements over there, and that was probably the eight hundred thousand dollars that you were talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's what I'm just, so that fluctuates yearly?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so like one, okay, okay.
It is, it depends on how well the hotel did.
Okay, alright, just answer your question.
Yes, and that's why we've only been putting a hundred thousand dollars in that line item.
Understand.
So that we wouldn't get caught not having enough funds there to cover it when they do have a deficit.
Yes, ma'am.
Because nobody expected COVID, but it happened.
Just thinking of the explanation, thank you.
Okay, so, Miss Johnson?
So that means that you cannot take the hundred thousand and give that to United Way, correct?
No, ma'am, we cannot. No, ma'am, we cannot.
Makes sense.
Okay, Mr. President, I'll, uh, withdraw line, um, forty-five, that hundred thousand. Ms. Beville, seven-nine-four-oh-four, I will withdraw.
Okay.
Uh, that next line, Ms. Beville, I will withdraw.
The page forty-six, are you?
Yes, ma'am.
From the mayor council?
Uh, six-six-nine, uh, uh, understanding that that's already done, okay? And so the only, only adjustments I have is line item seven-eight-seven-eight-two. That'll be zeroed out.
Which page?
That is page forty-six.
Okay, line item seven-eight-seven-two?
Seven-eight-seven-eight-two, yeah.
Okay, seven-eight-seven-eight-two?
Yeah. And, um, it'll be an increase to seven-eight-seven-four-zero. That's, that's all, this is all page forty-six.
Third part?
Seven-eight-seven-four-zero.
Page forty-six.
Page forty-six. We're in our item number here, yes? Um, that's about twenty-four thousand. I, I put twenty-five, I don't know why I put twenty-four. I think this got retyped because I didn't like that. Um. I'm, I'm reading off of what this, I didn't, I don't have my email open that I sent out. Um, if it's a thousand dollar adjustment, I'll make it. If, uh, seven-eight-seven-seven-two, that is increased.
With fifteen?
That, that is not, this is not what I typed. Let me go to my email. Alright, so seven-eight-seven-four-zero, increase twenty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Seven-eight-seven-seven-two, increase fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Seven-eight-seven-eight-one, ten thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Seven-eight-seven-three-four. Fifteen thousand. Seven-eight, uh, no, seven-three-four, seven-eight-seven-three-four. Fifteen thousand. Yes. That's fifteen thousand, and that's it. That's it.
Alright, we got the copy, Ms. Beville. Alright, there's a motion on the floor for amendment on the item that just was read before you.
Wait, wait, wait.
All those that you have below that one, are you?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, because I, I, they were kind of added in a different place, but seven-seven-six-six-eight, Ms. Beville, page forty-six.
I'm looking at it.
That's a hundred thousand. I wanted to create a new line item.
That is, it's a little bit late to be talking about creating a new line item.
But a transfer of.
That, that's a new account number.
New account number, okay.
That we would have to create in the system.
Okay. You need me to tell you where it's going to?
I'm sorry?
You, uh, it's going for Urban League Alabama. And two hundred thousand. Is, uh, um, to the Housing Department, which is the line item number.
We all need our calculators. You know that, right?
Yeah, I'm going to go into the line item number.
To make sure that we've got this in balance. Angie, you got it all? Okay.
It's on that memo that I sent. I sent it to you and to Angie.
Do you have the memo with you?
I have the, um, account numbers, Ms. Beville. I have to, um, go back to my email, but I do have the account number.
Angie has the email. I don't have it here. So you want to go through that again, one more time to make sure we're in balance while we got this meeting? Okay, so go ahead, one more time, if you would, make sure we're in balance.
Alright, that's it. Okay, it was a, um, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollar, uh, difference in what I pushed out. That is, you said something about the accounts, but that was for Alabama Kidney Foundation. And that was from seven-eight, seven-eight-seven-eight-two. It's not on there.
Okay, so go through each line item again, just one more time, make sure that we're in balance.
Alright, so it's seven-eight-seven-four-zero, twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Seven-eight-seven-seven-two, fifteen thousand. Seven-eight-seven-eight-one, ten thousand. That's increase. Seven-eight-seven-three-four, fifteen thousand. And then there was a, I was doing a, uh, new account for Alabama Kidney Foundation for thirteen thousand, seven ninety-seven.
Okay, so we've got the increase there, which is sixty-five thousand. That's what the same thing is here for the kidney, Alabama Kidney Foundation. Okay, so we're at seventy thousand and seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
That's it, okay. Alright, and then the seven-eight, seven-seven-six-six-eight. That was the hundred thousand to Urban League, and I need to get you the Housing Department's, um, account number, which I was looking for.
Okay, I think I read it in that budget.
Ma'am.
We don't have that line item for the housing authority and the city's budget.
Ma'am.
The housing authority does not have an account number in the city's budget.
They're under economic, uh, economic development.
So you're saying.
Or the commu, they don't have a line item?
Not in the, uh, general fund operating debt service, uh, debt service budget. That will be a, a created new.
Alright, we, we done? We ready?
Yes. Uh, twenty-three.
And they give that line item number up for that.
Are you going to do the decrease from HMFI to the zoo?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and the last one, you're gonna do that one or not? From Health Department? That very last one, very last two?
No, ma'am. I, I did, I, I removed them. Yeah, Charlie did though, so I, I removed those, I removed those. Mm-hmm, and, uh, seven-eight-seven-eight-zero, HM, that twenty-five thousand to seven-nine-five-oh-two, twenty-five thousand. Increase, so it was a decrease to an increase. Alright, and I will draw the one for the, um, two hundred thousand. I will draw that one.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I will draw it.
So we good now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think we've got it. We hope we do.
We got, you got the amendments?
Yes, based on what she just said here. And I think the, the increases was seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and, um, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars was the total amount. Okay.
Alright.
What was the total again to be?
Seventy-eight thousand, seven ninety-seven.
Okay, we have a motion on the amendments on the floor. All in favor of amendments made by this Supreme Ms. Johnson, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Okay, keep your hands up because they're, you're going up and down. One, two, three, five, seven. Five.
Alright, all opposed have the same right.
Two. I don't have fours' vote or sixes' vote.
She abstained.
They're abstaining. Four and six abstain. So the motion carries.
Alright, so now we're voting on the main motion. Alright, now we're voting on the twenty-twenty-six Operation Budget.
Ms. Blaylock?
As amended.
Ms. Blaylock?
Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Pruitt does have some amendments. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hold up a second. Ms., uh, Blaylock, you should have a page over that for those two positions that were having moved out of, um,
Out of council budget.
Into.
That was.
Did you not have those? Like, I didn't hear them mention.
It was on that big sheet with everything else. I did not have, uh, Angie gave it to me, so. Who's gonna make the motion to amend that one?
Charlie, you have it?
I got it, I can.
You make the motion?
Yeah. Do you know which two it is? It's, it's, it's the move that.
The two positions, yes, from the council's budget because it's a monthly, uh, budget versus a by-week thing.
You got this copy in front of you?
We got the copy.
So it's page eight?
It's page, it's not.
Alright.
It's not of the whole.
Oh, page.
No, it's just.
It's the, the two positions, uh, for the council that's coming out of part two that's going into the clerk's budget. Got two positions?
Make a motion to move, to move those positions.
You got that, Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so we have the amendments. Now we're voting on the main motion.
No, sir, we gotta vote on that.
On that one? Okay, all in favor of the, Mr. Jim Rice's amendment, do so by showing your hand.
Unanimous. Now we're back to the main motion to, no, Mr. Pruitt's amendment. Keep trying to forget it. On page thirty-three, decrease police salaries, um.
What's the page? Should I break in?
It's decrease police seven-eleven salaries on page thirty-three. To make it thirty-six million, two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and eighteen. Decrease it by two point five million.
In, in that line item?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have it for the fringe benefits as well, which is seven-one-three?
He didn't do anything with the benefits.
No, ma'am, I did not.
And on page thirty-four, increase five seven-eleven salaries by, uh, two point five million.
Mr. Pruitt?
Okay, alright, you, you got it?
May I ask a question?
Can we just take the vote?
Okay, I, I know I have to be quiet.
Alright, and let me explain, Councilwoman Calhoun, what I did, and if, if this council and the public remembers last year that we gave fifteen percent raise to the police department. And right, wrong, or indifferent, forever and ever, police and fire have gone hand in hand. They have, if one gets one, the other gets one. And, well, they're considered public safety, Charlie, and they are. So we've done it, right, wrong, or indifferent, and, and again, I, you know, I sort of pushed it that we expand it from captain's own, you know, after the fact. So what fire is doing today, I think, is, is fair. It's two point five is roughly, you know, half of it, uh, half of what y'all are asking for. So that's why I did it. It does not defund the police. There's four hundred police that we budgeted for. Now that we're only going to budget for three hundred and ninety-five or three hundred and ninety, so it does not do absolutely nothing to MPD. And I know I'd be the last one.
Alright, so you, you got your motion?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Could I say one, just one sentence?
Yes, ma'am.
In order for the budget office to do that, you're gonna have to determine what those positions are along with the fringe benefits. Balance it and give it back to the mayor's office.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor.
Wait a second, wait a second, I want to make sure we do this right.
Okay, we're finna do it right, we're finna vote it. We don't have to do it unless it passes.
I understand that, but you can't do it as a raise when we did PD, we did fifteen percent. We didn't figure out.
Yes, we did. You may not have.
I showed it.
We, we had to, a lot of hours, and we have to take positions. Whatever the vacant position is, with the fringes and move that amount of money. We just can't go in there and reduce this number by two. With the fringes and move that amount of money. We just can't go in there and reduce this number by two point five million dollars. It doesn't work like that in the accounting system.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion of the, what was your motion again, Ms. Pruitt? Three point five?
Two point five.
Two point five. All in favor of the motion? All in favor of the motion, Mr. Pruitt's motion, do so by showing your hand. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Four.
All opposed have the same right.
Mr. Pruitt? Four. I need Mr., I need, uh, Councilor Johnson's.
Yeah, and, and I just want, Mr. President, if I could just make a statement, um.
Mr. Mitchell's vote. I need Mr. Mitchell's vote. Are you abstaining, Mr. Mitchell?
Okay.
Yes, you're abstaining?
No, no. He voted opposed.
Okay, so it makes it five-four.
Okay, Mr. President, if I may, um.
Ms. Johnson?
Uh, just for clarification for the, uh, fire, uh, we are very thankful for what you do. Um, I, we, we normally, when it comes, because when we did the police department, we met for two months? Two months in the Public Safety Committee. We went back and forth and asked questions, got research. I, I felt like I was part of finance, um, dialing down numbers, and we went by position, by rank, by merit, and it made sense. If you just pull two point five, and what if we don't cover everybody? Or what if we don't, how do you know what percentage of a raise that is? Like, that really, it would have, I, I wouldn't say, let's go in the Public Safety Committee and do the same thing we did for PD for fire, so it can make sense and we can.
Balance it correctly.
Wisely say and balance the budget and say for fiscal year twenty-six, this is what this was look like. And I'm pretty sure every other department gonna come, and retirees gonna come, but, so what does that look like holistically to make it make sense? For some kind of raise in fiscal year twenty-six, instead of just throwing a number in the air and hoping it hits somewhere? And they don't even get what they need or deserve. I think that they deserve that same amount of attention and time.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President, I think we.
Mr. Graham?
I think where Mr. Pruitt was coming up with that number, I think, when the fire came, they, the raise would be four point six, I think. And so he took about half of that number and threw in a couple hundred thousand in case it was more. I think that, I'm not putting words in his mouth, but I think that's where the number came from.
That's exactly where the number came from.
Ms. Blaylock, you got, you got the count?
Yes, sir, it, it fails, well, the motion to amend. It failed four to five, the motion.
Okay, alright, now we're voting on the main motion to amend, to adopt the twenty-twenty-six Operating Debt Service Budget. Alright?
Move to adopt it.
It's already on the floor, so just vote.
Okay, alright, me to vote, all in favor, do so by showing your hand.
Six.
Alright, all opposed have the same right.
Mr. President?
One. I need one and twos' vote. Are you abstaining? Are y'all abstaining? I can't hear you.
I would not. I mean, I voted to give them a raise.
Are you voting no or abstaining?
I don't even know what the question is. I voted on the raise.
No, ma'am, we're, we're, that has already been voted on. This is the motion to adopt as amended. This is the motion to adopt the budget as amended.
Alright, well, you got six, one and two?
I've got six yeses, I've got one no, and I don't, I don't have one and twos' vote. You need to tell me, because are y'all abstaining?
No.
No. You're a no.
Alright.
Okay, so it's gonna be six to three.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Council. Good luck with your budget, Mayor, Ms. Beville, good luck, thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Item ten, application for a conference center doing business is Hidden Gem, thirty-seven, fifty-eight, Norman Bridge Road.
Alright, representative for?
Hidden Gem.
Hidden Gem, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, your name for the record?
Marita Farmer-Wright.
Okay, Ms. Wright?
Mr. President, I'd like to have Mr. Taylor come up real quick. Bob? Ms. Wright, there are some concerns that business is being conducted without a license at your facility. Also, business being conducted that has alcohol present without permission to have alcohol at that. And that's why it was brought to me by the Revenue and Licensing Department, and that, that is happening before you even have a license to. and that, that is happening before you even have a license to operate. I've had the Neighborhood Association give me some concerns about the same thing. Bob, is there anything else to add to the activities that you're being told are taking place at this location?
Correct, we received a tip.
Okay.
So.
What kind of tip? And when did you receive the tip?
Hold on.
Got the tip Monday.
The tip for what?
Ms., uh, Ms. Rice, talk to the council, talk to the council.
Okay, well, I mean, I need to know what the tip was.
Okay, what, what, Ms., tell us what, what, what you saying, Ms.?
We have an event center that's coming in here before us for a license.
Okay.
And they are often conducting business without a license, is what I'm being told by the Revenue Department, and they're conducting business that has alcohol present, which they're not supposed to do.
So my question would be, have we sent them a cease and desist letter?
We have not.
Okay, that's, that's part of the problem that we're faced with.
Well, see, they don't have a license.
Yeah, they don't, we can't give them a cease and desist to stop operating.
We can't give them a cease and desist when they don't have a license.
Can I say something?
Hold on, let me finish.
Okay.
But what, what I'm thinking, if we, we know that businesses are operating in this city without a license, they're operating without a license.
Right.
They don't have license, no, we can't do a cease and desist, I understand that. But what is the protocol to shut a business down and operate in this city illegally? So this the problem we have to fix within this city, because we got this going on all over. The gentleman earlier today was on the rezoning, he's operating, he's just trying to get the license. But he said to this council that he was already doing his free market.
Stand corrected, yes, we can't do a cease and desist.
Okay, so we, have you received a cease and desist?
I received, and that's when I went down there. I had a license, but when I changed the name, that's when everything came to me about, I need to do this, and then they keep saying something about the square footage of my building. Portion of the building, I don't even use that. So it is an event center. I rent it out for, like, family functions. There is not been any alcohol being sold. That's why I'm asking, where is this tip coming from? I'm also connected to this thing and a barbershop. I have never had any issues. We never had any police activity having to come out, any issues. There is a dance team that I let use the facility now for their practice, because they were practicing in Shakespeare Park. I don't charge them, I let them use it, so the girls are not in the heat. So I'm trying to figure out where is this tip coming from?
Ma'am, do you have a business license or not?
We have one, but they will not renew my license, because this is coming up now. They're saying that because it's considered a, they said, once I'm a conference center due to the square footage, and then, I mean, I'm confused, so that's why I'm here. When they.
So Revenue, what, what's the holdup with, with moving forward? What, what does she need? What is it that you need from this, this position?
You guys will need to approve, if she's gonna, if you're gonna allow her to open.
Okay, so what is she doing different? She says she already have a license.
She's gotta get her renewed.
She's not have the license. They're operating without a license.
The license.
You have a five-foot license, you don't have a license.
Right.
Okay. All right, so, Mr., Mr., uh, Samantha.
So, this is the problem with this, this process, is that she's got a business and she's got customers operating inside of her business right now. We believe that, that she's violating the terms if she were to have a license, but she's still operating. So I can grant the license today, I can put all the stipulations on it with any other event center. I'll tell you, right where you are is in a place where I've not been too happy with event centers recently, okay? The last time we were dealing with this, that event center, the conference center that was, that strip club ended in a shooting. Now, I'm not saying that's gonna happen at your building, but that's why I'm being very, very cautious with this business, okay? I'm gonna grant the license today. They're gonna make sure with me that you are following, uh, the rules that come with an event center. There will be no alcohol on, on premises, and this place will not be open past nine o'clock, because the activities that you have listed in there don't need to be happening after nine o'clock PM.
You got it, Ms. Rice? All right, Mr., motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Ms. Johnson, are you voting or not?
I'm abstaining.
You're not?
No, ma'am.
Okay. It's gonna be seven. I've got one absent. Ms. Johnson, you're voting no?
Abstaining.
Ma'am?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain?
Yes, ma'am.
Good luck with your business.
Item eleven, application for a lounge retail liquor class-two package license doing business is Payless Tobacco and Beverage, seven-twenty Eastern Boulevard.
Your name for the record?
Couldn't hear you.
Is it on the mic?
Look for Raymond Chris.
Okay. All right. We already had the public hearing on this item. Oh, are you guys for or against? Just standing behind you, sir. You're for? Okay. All right, and the public communication on item number eleven, we have KK Middleton, uh, Jamel Brown, and Miki, uh, Miki, Mike, this Mike right here. Uh, Miki Mike. So you guys is for, you opposing?
Oppose.
Okay, so you guys is on this side. Just step to your side, let him have the mic.
What's his name?
And good evening to the mayor and to the city council and city officials, employees. I am KK Middleton, and my position for this business is to oppose, and I am not coming to speak on behalf of myself alone. I do serve as a pastor in the community of District One, in the community of Carroll Villa, where we are connected to at least twenty-four thousand residents in District One, twenty-two hundred residents in Carroll Villa. I'm also speaking on behalf of the religious community, Grace Church East Montgomery and Covenant Ministries International. I'm also speaking on behalf of at least three Divine Nine organizations who have made Carroll Villa their home for meetings on a monthly basis. I am also speaking on behalf of those who have dance classes now in Carroll Villa, those who have theater and play practices now in Carroll Villa, and also those who meet, at least forty-eight of them have personally told me, who meet with the Carroll Villa Civic Association, that they too disapprove of this license, and I'm asking that you will consider, knowing that the data shows already that Montgomery, when we talked about crime per capita, is thirty-two per one thousand, and unfortunately, eighty-five percent of the counties in Alabama have a better living arrangement and are considered less criminal activities than Montgomery, and I'm trying to shift that narrative. And for the past three years, we have been able to reduce all crime in Carroll Villa since I've been there. And when Officer Pettway, if he was to come on record, he would tell you, the only issue that we have now is speeding, and we would like to keep it that way. We have a daycare, which is at least two doors down from this proposed address. We have an elementary school on the same service road, and we have a university and a law school in the same community, and people from even those institutions all have personally reached out and asked me to speak on their behalf. And we do have senior citizens in the community who are very concerned. They do not want the high traffic, they do not want the increase of violent crimes, which the data shows that happens, and we do not wanna stress out nine-one-one with more calls to that area, and we're trying to, again, change the narrative of Montgomery. And I want to not, I'm not against, uh, the existing package stores, but I am saying we don't need another one. And I am not only here by myself this evening, but there are other individuals who have came, uh, with me, and those who are comfortable with standing. If you would, those who oppose in the audience, would you stand? And that is my proposal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Middleton.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, Mr. Jamel Brown, are you for, polls or are you against? Polls are, are in favor?
I'm for it.
Okay, all right, you wanna go ahead and speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this gentleman been doing business in Montgomery for twenty years. Born and raised, his mother came to this country, he was born here. And he has a location on Woodley Road. He has a location next to Crystals on the Boulevard. There have not been no complaints in those, that city council district, of anything happening at this gentleman's store. This man went, bought the old Toyota, Toyota building spot, and wants to continue another business there. If you look at it, the daycare, the church, all the other places, is not in the perimeter of this business that close. This man, Mr. President, has given back to this community through many organizations, neighborhood associations, never had a problem. You witnessed, Mr. President, and the rest of you all on this council, other package stores that myself and other activists came down here to oppose because of shooting and illegal activity and police being called at other package stores across the city. This guy right here, my brothers and sisters, he do not have a history, a bad history with his stores. He's going to move the warehouse, which is on the Boulevard next to City Trend, to this location also, where they're gonna have milk, bread, served as a, like a vendor spot. If your store wanna come and get some chips, juices, drinks, water, and all that good stuff, he gonna move that over there also. He have security, they're gonna be there, armed, licensed security, that's gonna be there to make sure if you go there and you buy your Lulu or your Patron or your Hennessy, you go straight home or wherever you wanna go, but you ain't gonna be in that area. He made sure he did everything he can, this is third time here, to make sure he satisfy that area. Um, my closing statement is this, he bought an empty building on the Eastern Boulevard. If you ride down the Eastern Boulevard and certain places on that area, businesses are leaving, they're vacating out, they're going out. He spent his hard-earned money to get that location, Mr. President, and put it up, look at sales. Look at sales, I'm gonna, buy me some Patron when I leave here tonight, I need some. So, uh, please give him a chance, like, we give everybody else a chance, Mr. President, and my brothers and sisters on this council, give Chris a chance to show you all that just like we got Woodley Road going good, the other one next to Crystals, I promise you all, y'all won't have no problem with this location. And thank you for giving the opportunity, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We have one more speaker, Mr. Miki, Miki May, M-E-K-I-E, Mika, Miki Mike.
I thought was the role, but since you called me, I will. Um, my name is Miki May. Uh, my sister lives in Carroll Villa. And I think, uh, one thing that everybody is forgetting, of course, crime may be a factor, but, um, also property values. Um, just to, a little bit about myself, um, I've been in the industry, mortgage industry, for about twenty years. I have my license with the Department of Veteran Affairs, FHA, um, as well as USDA. Um, I currently am employed with Hope Federal Credit Union as Vice President of Mortgage Underwriting. And regarding appraisals, I've seen it all. I've seen it all, and I just don't feel that adding a liquor store, um, in that area is gonna be conducive to property increases, so I just wanted to add that, uh, to the argument. Thank you.
Mi, Mr. President?
Mr. Graham?
Mike, do you have some pictures that I, maybe send some pictures from the liquor store to the houses next door? All right, that is for the front of the liquor store, that's the neighborhood behind it. That's how close, see how close the house, just a ditch across. Um, he, he runs a good business. We, my, personally, I agree with Mr. Pastor Middleton and the, and the young lady there. I don't, I don't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be opposed. Uh, it's just too close to the houses right there.
Okay. This is the public, it's, well, it's not a public, we had everybody speak on this. What's your motion, um?
Move to deny.
Oh, yes, sir.
So I'd like to say this to the community and the city council members on the board, that our business operation hour is not like any other business, um, hours. Our business hours is basic and simple. We open at eleven o'clock and we close at eleven o'clock at sharp. For, for security measures for my business, even though I don't need a security, I hired a security company for one of my store, because I seen a couple of brothers was hanging out outside. So I don't want that problem for none of my business, so I hired a security company who, they monitor my outside of the business, make sure nobody drinking, nobody smoking, nobody littering. I don't want that problem in my business. If everyone give me opportunity to do the business in the city, I'll promise to show Carroll Villa that every businessman is not a bad businessman, there's some good businessmen out here.
Chris, did you buy the building?
It's in the process.
So you haven't bought it yet?
It's been bought. I got a twenty-five-year lease, and me and the owner, we have talked, I have been at lease for two years before I purchased, because the way the property.
So you're leasing the building?
It's for twenty-five years, which is basically is above property, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Make a motion to deny.
All right, have a motion on the floor to deny. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Four.
All opposed, you have the same right?
One.
All right, you have an extension?
I need to know, uh, the extensions, gonna be three and six. I don't have, I don't have Mrs. Rowley's vote.
I'm abstaining.
I can't hear you.
I'm abstaining.
I can't hear you.
Speaking to you.
I'm doing extension. I'm abstaining.
Okay, so it's gonna be four, one, and three. That's eight, and we've got one absence. So the motion to deny fails for lack of majority. So there is the supposition of a positive motion, if the chair so desires to entertain one.
Okay. All right, so you asked me to ask for the vote for a positive motion to?
You, you need to call for a vote, call for a motion. If somebody wants to make a motion, it can die for lack of motion, or you can make a motion to approve and it fails or passed.
I can't make the motion. Do we have a motion on the table?
No, sir, you can't.
I can't. To approve, do we have a motion on the floor to approve?
At this point, it dies for lack of motion. So the resolution is defeated for the lack of a motion to approve.
All right. All right, so it's been denied.
Item twelve, ordinance requiring council approval of contracts fifty thousand and
All right, so we on item number twelve?
Yes, sir.
Mr., uh, Samantha?
No change in the last minute, motion to adopt.
All right, have a motion to adopt item number twelve. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Raise your hand, raise your hand.
Five.
All opposed, you have the same right?
Four, and one absent. The motion carries. The ordinance is adopted.
That would've been easier if it couldn't be four.
Item thirteen, application for a lounge retail liquor class-two package.
Hold on, Ms. Blaylock, thank you.
Ms. Blaylock, the vote. When was it, it was five-three.
It's five-three.
I, I'm, I'm not voting for it. What, what you had me down for, Ms. Blaylock?
We need.
Can we do, can we do twelve? Let's do another count of items.
Oh, I've got six down twice, that's what I've got. How did you vote? How did you vote?
Against.
Against, you're no, so it's going to be four, four. It's gonna die for lack of majority. Here again, the supposition is that there's, uh, the presumption of a positive motion.
Hold on, Ms. Blaylock.
Well, that was the motion to adopt, I'm sorry, it wasn't a motion to deny.
Mr. Prudential's coming in the door.
This motion need die four-four, next item?
Item thirteen, application for a lounge retail liquor class two package license doing business is Smoke Haven, thirty-seven fifty-nine Eastern Boulevard. This is not in compliance due to be being within two hundred and fifty feet of a church.
Okay, your name for the record, sir?
My name is Thomas Tankersley, I represent Khalil West Pointe and Smoke Haven. And this is about the issue of being not in compliance as, as far as the church goes. I have a number of exhibits that I'll be glad to hand to each of you, or, or to you, Linda, to put on the screens.
They will have, they would have to have it back there, uh, it would've had to be either be on a thumb drive or been sent by email.
Mr. Tankersley.
Can, can I give these to the, to the members of the council?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
And council, if you'll make sure I get a copy of that for the record.
Mr. Tankersley, before you get into your spiel, this is, it's not in compliance with the two hundred and fifty feet unless you gonna show us something that's gonna show her outside the two hundred and fifty feet with this map.
Yes, sir, what, what I am doing is based on the ordinance thirty-nine twenty-twenty. The council, in my reading of the ordinance in, uh, section four, paragraph C, retain the ability to not leave common sense at the door. Uh, specifically, the council is not preventing from considering the proximity to an education, religious, recreational facility, or other relevant factor increasing decision as to his license. If you will take a look at the map provided, this is the Walmart parking lot. And the strip center to the right, the church is on the bottom left-hand corner is thirty-nine seventy-five Eastern Boulevard. The Walmart is thirty-eight oh-one at the bottom center. The Murphy gas station is thirty-eight oh-nine, which is right north of the Walmart. The package, uh, excuse me, the Smoke Haven is thirty-seven fifty-nine, which is on the right-hand side. The Smoke Haven is seven hundred and fifty-seven feet, the parking lot for the Smoke Haven is seven hundred and fifty-seven feet to the, to the church. In other words, when the developers developed this, this property back, I believe in ninety-nine to, to the early two thousands, they cut two parcels out to satisfy Walmart. Walmart and Murphy are selling, uh, alcohol at those locations. Uh, in Walmart's case, it's, you know, a hundred and twenty feet from the church. Uh, the strip center to the right that we are considering today as part of the development, someone in their, at, at some point, made a decision to give entrance to the Eastern Boulevard and there is, that is an alley slash service road that runs, uh, along the left-hand side down the red portion of that. So this is a really odd-looking, uh, piece of property. And the city, if you will look at the blue circles, when the city went and determined the two hundred and fifty feet, they took it from the end of a road, there is a berm there, the roads from the parking lots at the Walmart do not enter into the parking lot, so this is the old Windsong movie theater, they do not enter the, uh, do not enter the church. And, and so, we're, we're asking that the council and its wisdom and, and common sense say, you know, we're, we're eight hundred feet away almost, which is three times what the ordinance contemplated. And so we're asking that based on the council's ordinance that they grant, the, uh, the off, the off-premises license, it's in the same parking lot with no, no barriers as Walmart and Murphy that are also selling in this neighborhood. The church was bought knowing with the knowledge that alcohol is being sold in that parking lot, uh, next door. So, we have, we've taken security measures, we've got roll-down doors, we've got a security company that should this application be granted that will, uh, that will be at the door of the business, Walmart provides security for the entire parking lot. And quite frankly, I'm surprised that Walmart doesn't own the entrances to the eastern bypass and to, uh, to the road. That, that seems a little odd to me, but that's, that's how the developer did this. So, it's my understanding, I was not at the last hearing, that there were no objections from, uh, from anyone, and as such, until it was brought to the attention that based on the city mapping and the land use, that, uh, that's when the issue of the two hundred and fifty feet came up. But other than that, I, I believe it's be your consideration and answer to approve it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitch.
This will be in, in, in District Six, um, all indications from, from myself that was, that was given to me in writing and verbally that this was, uh, out of compliance, until I see something different from land use, I'm gonna carry, I mean, I'm gonna put this in, I'll carry it over indefinitely.
Table indefinitely.
Table it indefinitely.
Alright, it's been table indefinitely. So we're not gonna take a vote, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, ordinance granting a franchise to Loomis Faber of Alabama LLC to construct, operate, and maintain transmission cable in the city's right-of-way.
Alright, representative for item fourteen? Oh, that's, that's, that's it. Alright, need a motion? Need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Spender rules, have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Unanimous, the, uh, ordinance is adopted. Item fifteen, resolution terminating contract with square patent box for a hundred eighty thousand for federal advocacy services and approving and authorizing mayor to execute contract with then Secoya Associates for fifteen thousand per month for twelve months.
Alright, need a motion? Item fifteen, need a motion?
Motion to suspend rules.
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Ms. Blaylock?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson's not here.
I know, but it's unanimous of the people that are here, my vote is actually eight. It will be correct in a minute, yes, ma'am. Item sixteen, resolution authorizing mayor negotiating and executing agreement with Lot Safety for up to a hundred fifty thousand to purchase software, cameras, and professional services for MPD.
Motion to suspend rules?
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item seventeen, application for a restaurant retail liquor license doing business is Rock and Roll Sushi, fourteen seventy Taylor Road.
Alright, Mr. Jenra. Oh, okay, this is a public hearing. Representative for, um, Rock and Roll Sushi, please come forward. Alright, your name for the record, sir? Your name?
Blaine Noble.
Did you get it, Ms. Blaylock?
Blaine Hart.
Blaine Noble.
Noble, thank you.
Alright, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Senator, the class of the hearing has been held before the council, need a motion?
Motion to suspend rules?
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you all.
When you plan to open?
We're actually opening, we're actually been open for a while, I took over the business April first.
Okay, so change, okay, thank you, sir, good luck with your business.
Item eighteen, application for a restaurant retail liquor license doing business is Japanese Restaurant, eighty-eight sixteen Mini Brown Road.
Alright, need a representative for Okaso Sushi, Osaka Sushi?
Japanese Restaurant.
Your name for the record?
Yes, sir.
Your name?
Oh, uh, Lee Y A N D E, the first name, the last name, L I.
Okay, you got it, alright. This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Senator, the public hearing has been held before the council, Mr. Jenra.
Motion to suspend rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item nineteen, application for a lounge retail liquor class one license doing business is Ricky's one oh-seven South Court Street. Please note that, uh, District Seven has recused himself.
Alright, need a representative for Ricky's LLC?
Ricky, don't lose that number.
Your name for the record?
Will O'Connor.
Alright.
Bo Henderson.
Bill Henderson.
He said it with that base. Alright, this is the public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Alright, Senator, the public hearing has been held before the council, need a motion?
Uh, motion to suspend the rule?
Have a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Alrighty.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Alright, good luck with your business, when you plan to open?
Saturday.
Saturday?
Thank you, council.
Alright, thank you.
Council drinks free, is that what he said?
Item twenty, application for a towing company doing business is Blackham and Emergency Roadside and Recovery.
Alright, this item is being carried over?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mitch.
Item twenty-one, resolution appointing Cortez D. Harris to the Water and Sewer Board.
Tell you get a motion to suspend the rules for the remaining of the general.
Motion to suspend the rules for the remaining agenda.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand. Is Mr. Cortez Harris here?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Oh. Thank you, sir, welcome to the board.
Item number twenty-two, resolution appointing Devan Ski Boyd to the Industrial Development Board.
Alright, need a motion?
Motion to suspend rules?
We already did that.
Oh, mo- motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Mr. President, can my, my opponent stand up, he was started off on the young mayor's council, so can you please say, Mr. Boyd? No, no, you can just, no, you don't have to talk.
Welcome to the IDB board. Item twenty-three?
Item twenty-three, resolution declaring authorizing assessing cost of payment of purchases on various lots.
Alright, have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted, I do have contingencies, council, before you jump up.
Yeah, you carry, everything is carried over to District Five.
Okay.
Okay, let's go.
Contingencies, District One, um, five hundred dollars to Jamarri Terrell Williams Foundation, two thousand to Town Lake Homeowners Association, eleven hundred to Forest Hills Homeowners Association, one thousand to Mountain View Homeowners Association. For District Five, six hundred and fifty dollars to South Lawn Middle School Flag Football Program.
Alright, need a motion?
Oh, I got, I got nine hundred, I need to get rid of.
Okay. It's a long list, you wanna write them down?
No, it's just, it's just nine hundred, correct?
Yes, that's what you have left.
Okay, um, send it to, uh, Carver Band.
Carver.
Hold on, wait a minute, was it the flag football? Was it flag football at Carver? Carver, send it to, uh, Carver Flag Football.
Carver Flag Football? Go to, they'll go to MPS for Carver High School, right?
Yes, ma'am, flag football, make sure you specify that flag football.
Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, sir?
I got three thousand dollars for Young Men on a Mission.
Three thousand, Young Men.
And I got fifty-three hundred for Child Protect.
And what?
Fifty-three hundred for Child Protect.
Child Protect.
Alright, need a motion for a call? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Alright, you know, the council member have anything before I go to the communication?
Which get out?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
And I just want us to, to, to relook at how many, um, liquor stores and package stores we had to come on this agenda. I, I really want us to consider, um, not saturating the city of Montgomery with certain type of business, we did the same thing for these title loans. Please, let's look at not saturating the city of Montgomery with certain business, we must come up with something and we won't have to do this every, um, city council meeting, thank you.
Mr. President?
Also, Mr. President, can we look at, um, doing something, um, for the understanding for the fire department, if we, like we did with the fire department? Put it in a committee and let's look at it and review it for the Public Safety Committee so that they can understand the concept of what we have to do before they can get a raise. I mean, we can take the numbers and utilize them, but we gotta make sure the numbers are added correctly and placed on what job prescription of each one of those fires that are assigned there.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Riley, I'm just making this statement, in this budget that we just passed, there's a raise in there for all city employees, so it's just not like we're open looking at fire department. Every city employee had a five percent increase, I think, in this raise that we just passed. So what we're trying to do is look at the city as a whole. The thing is, I'm not just gonna make this statement, I don't know nowhere in America where the employees tell the CEO we want a raise.
Amen.
And so that's what we have to do as stewards of this city, as good stewards, the, the money that you guys put us in charge, we have to look at this across the board for every employee. So if we let the Department of Fire, the Police Department, sanitation that's come down and stand before this council and say this is what we want, we gonna need it, we get with a few council members and we move it, those are the things that happen in this city, and that's not being good stewards of the dollars that are, the taxpayers are paying within this city. It's a whole lot of needs within this city. And, and we pay, we got good benefits, we got good jobs, this is a good city to work for. So that, that's what we had to deal with, every, every employee got a raise in this past budget. Public Safety got it fourteen percent two years ago. So those are the things we have to look at whole, it's nothing against what the fire department does, it does an excellent job for the city of Montgomery, but as stewards in, in the city and being accountable people for the dollars that we receive in this city, and you know, I find it hard to believe today that we willing to just throw it out there, but that was just my statement on that, um.
Hang on, Mr. Carr, since you made that statement, hold on, hold on, I mean, since, since we're talking about this, and I'm gonna be very brief, I didn't, I didn't create the process, you know? Ever since Noel built the yard, police and fire have walked hand in hand through, through raises, through steps. When we, Mayor, when we voted on the, uh, uh, occupational tax, we sat down, Milford, Chief Jordan, man, he had it all laid out. And everybody from firefighter to police officer to, you know, captain to captain, they were, they were all the same. And we didn't do it, and, and part of it was my fault because we, I drove that fifteen percent, you know, for MPD. So, you know, it, it's not fair to those guys, um, I don't think, um, not to, why are we, why are we breaking it now? Why are we, you know, saying that they're not comparable to PD anymore and that sort of thing, that's all I'm saying.
Alright, alright, and our public communication?
Mr. President, I, I did, I wanted to set a date. Um, we had put it in committee, uh, last council meeting for the food truck, uh, the ordinance number was ten dash twenty seventeen, Ms. Blaylock? The date for that meeting is September seventeenth at four P M, that's, that's the Commerce and Industry.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson, and our public communication?